Good evening. My name's Mary Schreier, Deputy Mayor for Quispansys and I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First of all, I'd like to have a call to order. Good. And so could I have an approval of the agenda, please? Counselor Donovan, second by Counselor Olson. Thank you. I would like to call on Counselor Luck to please read the land acknowledgement. Oh, sorry, I'll back up and we'll have a vote on approval of the agenda. Please vote. Counselor Miller? You're good?
Yep.
Motion carried, six one. Thank you very much. Six zero, six zero. I just repeat. Okay, now, there it is. Okay, it just came up, came up. Great. We're going to move on to the land acknowledgement, moment of reflection, Counselor Luck, please.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispansys exists on the traditional territory of the Lewistekue, Malacite, and Nikma people who ancestors along with the Pasimaquadi tribes signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. And I have a few remarks on behalf of the mayor. First of all, you still have time to have your say about the new recreational facility allocation policy. This policy will guide how community spaces like our arenas, fields, and courts are booked, shared, and used. Your survey responses will help staff understand recreational facility usage and priorities across Quispansys. So whether you're a player or a parent, coach, volunteer, or just enjoying use of our facilities, we'd like to have your input into creating a policy that is reflective of our community. You can find a link to the survey on our website, quispansys.ca, on Have Your Say. The survey closes Monday, June 6. I did notice I used the walking track and there are paper surveys there if you would like to pick one up. And there's also survey, paper surveys here at the town hall. The survey closes Monday, June 16. We also will have an update on the survey during our meeting tonight at the Quispansys Town Hall. I know many of you, like myself, are anxiously awaiting the installation of the docks at Means Cove. In many years, the docks have been in place in time for the long weekend, but due to the water levels, it's been too high this year to put them in safely for our staff. The situation is being assessed regularly. Monitor the town's website, quispansys.ca, or our social media accounts for the latest updates on the docks at Means Cove. Don't let the full temper, cooler temperatures fool you. It was very chilly today. But it's almost time to open up the 97.3 wave pool at the Qplex. The pool is scheduled to open on Saturday, June 7. The pool offers daily swims, seasonal memberships for individuals and families. For swimming lessons, there are a few open spots left in selected categories. And remember to create an account or use your existing account to eliminate any registration delays. This Saturday, May 24th, is the annual Townwide Yard Sale. That's always fun. It runs from 8:30 to 1:00 all around your, our community. If you're selling something, you can add it, add your address to the list of participating homes by visiting the town of Quispansys Facebook page. The Townwide Yard Sale is on the advanced page. Click on the Discussions tab and add your address to the list. Bargain hunters can also use this list to map out their route. This is a rain or shine event, and please be careful when you're driving as people have their car, may have their cars parked on the road to look for their treasures. Thank you for everyone who came out to the Qplex on Thursday for the annual spring cleanup. Or no, I'm sorry, for the Cancer Resource Action Network Jumbo, Jumbo Colon Exhibition. There is a lot of important and relevant health information available on the large, at the large inflatable col, colon was an attention grabber. You can visit CCRAN.org for more information. We would also like to thank everyone who participated in a greener, cleaner Quispansys. We had many members in our community take part. I was joined by Counselor Olson and several, several other members of the town staff on the final day for the large-scale cleanup of municipal areas. The two dumpsters provided for the event were overflowing. That is a good thing and a bad thing. So please pick up the garbage. Thank you to all of you. You are helping keep our community beautiful and attractive. The 38th Annual Disability Awareness Week in New Brunswick is May 25th to the 31st. The main goal of the Disability Awareness Week is to raise public awareness of existing barriers that prevent citizens with disabilities from full and equal partnership in all aspects of their community and what may be done to correct the problems. For more information on Disability Awareness Week, please visit the government of New Brunswick website at G N B dot C A and search for the Premier's Council on Disabilities. Thank you very much. That ends the comments from the mayor, and we will now move on. Any disclosures of interest, please? Seeing there is none, we're going to now move on to presentations. And tonight, we're joining us virtually, it will be Mary Ellen Manikoff, who has joined us at our last council meeting, virtually. And Mary Ellen, you're here to give us an update on how the discussions are going on about the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen here. Can you just let me know if you can see that all right?
Yes, we can see it.
Perfect. Okay, well, we had a lovely trip to Quispansys. It was wonderful. We were met with great hospitality and had the opportunity to tour many beautiful spaces in your community. We were just planning our move to Quispansys while we were there. So thank you to everyone that we met, many friendly faces here around the horseshoe that we had the opportunity to, to meet with as well. So thank you all for your time, and I'm excited to kind of share a bit about where we're at and, and what we've heard so far. And so at the moment, we have around 561 survey respondents, which is a great amount, especially considering that we're only halfway through its opening period. So we opened it for about four weeks and we're about two weeks in. And so we would really love to see that increase as much as possible. So if anyone listening has the opportunity to share further, I heard it wonderfully in the announcements, but feel free to share with friends, family, and see how many Quispansys residents we can have fill that in because it makes everything community representative and we have great voices in there. We've spoken with 13 staff members and counselors, and we've heard from, through representatives, we estimate around 2,000 residents of Quispansys. So that's sort of includes families represented in their kids' registrations and speaking with those youth groups and so on and so forth. The sports we've heard from include men's hockey, adult pickleball, men's softball, youth softball, youth hockey, women's hockey, the vetoes, and more. So we're, we're really looking at reaching a broad range of the different sports groups and understanding how they utilize the spaces. And it's been extremely interesting to date. I think there's some incredible community groups in Quispansys that are doing wonderful things and utilizing facilities like the Qplex, like the CMA, to, to really create programming that enriches everyone's experience. So it's, I, I find it always nice to highlight here that although we're looking at recreation allocation and a lot of folks are kind of maybe worried about their time slots, or what does this mean for my group? I think the most resounding thing that we've heard is how incredible the programming is. That's, that's been, that's available to both adults and youth and seniors in Quispansys. So that's something for everyone to be proud about. We're really looking in and zoning in on ice and fields. Those seem to be the two areas that have the most kind of contention for peak times. And that's not to say that we're not looking at other spaces like pickleball courts, tennis courts, so on and so forth, but those have kind of been the, the, the areas where we really want to see some clear policy developed around how those spaces are allocated. So it's been really interesting to hear from everybody and lots of diverse perspectives. And the, another thing that I'll highlight is that in all of our conversations, folks are not just thinking about themselves, they're thinking about their other community members, which is really nice to see too. So we often hear, it's really important to our group, but we know it's important to this group too. So you know, we're here to make a fair, a fair, a fair allocation policy. So that's been really nice. It's been great to deal with everybody. There are still some sports that we are looking to zone in on. So we haven't heard from soccer, tennis, baseball, or figure skating. There's additional sports that you didn't see on the other slide that aren't here as well that will be covered, like swimming, for example, which will come through our survey. And as well as some other things that we've heard in the survey around, you know, there's some people really like curling. There's no curling facilities, and so on and so forth. But, but really, we're looking to, to speak with these four groups as well as we see them as sign of, kind of some key gaps in the particular spaces that are being discussed around allocation or that may have increased demand for, for utilization. So we've already started connecting with some of these groups. But this is sort of in summary from our trip up there last week. These were some of the gaps and we're already starting to fill them in. So that's really great. And we've had great support from staff to make that, to make that possible. I'm so very appreciative and going to have another round of, of engagements as we start to meet with these groups. I'm going to share a little bit of from the survey. I'd like to caveat this with being that the survey is not closed. So there's still data that's going to come in and this chart could look very different. You know, in three or two, two weeks' time. But going here from, from kind of right to left or clockwise, and I apologize, the graphs aren't that great. I scrap, I just grabbed them from our, our survey tool. But you can see kind of who we're speaking or who we're hearing from in the survey to date, which I think could be helpful also in in connecting within community to, to encourage further submissions. So right now, we can see the vast majority, almost 50% is individuals and families, followed by youth sports organizations, and then followed by adult recreational leagues here. And then we heard from schools, people who work in schools or educational institutions, business and private sector. And then some of our smaller kind of sections here include a community or cultural group, folks that don't use the complexes, or folks that have a disability and are looking for ways, related ways of exercising. So some of these may be even individual responses as we get kind of narrowed down. But at the outset, that's really who we're hearing from so far. When we look at age groups, vast majority, or I shouldn't say vast majority, actually, those are pretty similar pie, pieces here. We have 36 to 45-year-olds and 10 to 17-year-olds making up the greatest respondents. And this is not to say that we have 10-year-olds filling in the survey, but we do ask, you know, what are the age groups of folks living in your household? So what we're seeing most likely here is a lot of families with older children and then closely followed by families with children aged five to nine. Beyond that, we have a bit of a larger chunk for 46 to 54-year-olds and then almost an even split amongst all the other age groups. So this is just an interesting kind of way of seeing who is it that's really filling in the survey from a demographic perspective. But what it does quite look like is that the most number of responses we have are from families with children. And we've also surveyed on folks that have disabilities. I know this was a question that came up in the previous session, so I wanted to highlight this. And we've heard from a wider array of different people that are experiencing different disabilities, from mobility being the largest to mental health related to developmental pain-related, learning, flexibility, communications, hearing, dexterity. So many, many different types of disabilities. And, and this is really important to make sure that our data is, you know, representative of community and, and the different needs of community. And, and we have about 88 folks that took out, that took the survey that responded to this particular question. So it's important to kind of note that it's not the entire group, it's this subset of them. And, and what is important here is to say, okay, we're, we are getting some intersectional data, which is really important when we have things like this. And then interestingly, when demand for facility space is high, how should the following recreation groups pre, be prioritized? We do see, you know, almost 75% saying youth sports and activities. And we did hear that anecdotally as well from different groups saying, you know, we understand that youth need access to recreation. I think we can all remember being involved in recreation as kids and, and how much that does for our learning, how to be in a team, how to be a team player, and also how to challenge our own selves. And so I think a lot of people really do recognize that. And then also, right after that, looking at, actually, this, this graph goes the other way around. So it's first come, first served, or open public use, my apologies. So open public use being a key priority as well. And then community and cultural, cultural groups being this sliver here. So this is kind of like the basis, not the entire basis for the allocation policy, but this is the basis of what the community voice is saying about the allocation policy. So we'll, we'll augment this, knowing that this is about 560 people represented, looking at, okay, what are the groups saying? What are the schedules saying? What are the bookings saying? So I don't want anyone to look at this and be like, okay, so this is what the policy is going to be. By no stretch is that it. But this is what the community is saying, their perception of what recreation groups should be prioritized from their perspective. And it's just an interesting one as we go through and, and we watch it change over time too, as the survey's been open. It has shifted in different ways as well. So I'd just like to share this one to give a, give a high level understanding of what community is saying so far. So where are we right now? You may remember this timeline from the previous package. We're still right here, we're actually right here in the progress update presentation, but we're still in the community engagement phase. So I've kind of tweaked the timeline a little bit to show a bit of what that looks like. So we're right here and we've got continued consultations and data consolidation that will happen next. So we've got what folks are saying on surveys, we've got meetings and that sort of thing. And now we kind of take that and we look at all of the wonderful data that we have from staff to really understand. You know, sometimes we may hear something, but then data says otherwise. Sometimes we may not hear something, but data really points something else, something out. So we also really take time to comb through that and understand what behavioral trends have been in using the, using the facilities to create the next steps. So while we are waiting for the survey to close, we'll still be continuing to, to do those consultations and reviewing that data. And we will also be preparing a what we heard report that will be shared around. You know, what did we hear from community groups, the survey and that data? Following that, so you can see here, this is sort of where we're at in the, in the process. We will draft the policy. We'll review the draft with the project team and staff, and then it will move to vote, and then it will go to implementation. And that's where it will, there will be some communications and some change management that needs to occur in order for those new booking rules to come into effect. And I know there were some questions around that. And I think from, from kind of some collective conversations, the goal is to have it for the fall. However, that being said, you know, we want to make sure that's rolled out properly, that everyone has time to plan. And so there may, there may be a need to stretch it out, but at this point, we are looking on schedule. And so we'll be working with staff to make sure that not just the, the, the allocation policy is created, but also that it's, it's understood and it's, it's off-boarded in a way that makes them feel empowered to kind of take the next, next steps to implement it. And so that's sort of a, a high level of what the rest of the process looks like, as we kind of talked about in the last session. And so other than that, I'm here again to say, fill in the survey. Feel free to email quispansysrec@forcreative.ca as well if anyone has questions. Or if, you know, if there's any barriers in filling in the survey. We did have over 1,100 people start the survey. So that says sometimes people get busy or they get distracted, but if for any reason you want to have your voice heard, you represent a group, we can always have a scheduled meeting. Or otherwise, feel free to, to dig back into that survey. It should save your progress. So if you haven't finished it, you still can. And appreciate everyone's time and, and listening to me continue to talk about this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary Ellen. It sounds like the community is well-engaged, which is a, a good thing to see. And I think the numbers are looking pretty good, well, considering we're only halfway into it and encouraging more people to participate. Do I have any questions or counselors from council? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mary Ellen, for your presentation. I just have a question on the the tracking of the respondents when you go in there, because you have to put in your postal code and things like that. Do you also track the IP address? The reason I'm saying that is you could get a group that all of a sudden sends it out to 50 people to continue to fill in the surveys. So and if you don't, at the end is a combination of your recommendations from the personal discussions you're going to have with all of our user groups and staff, because again, I'm just worried that people can skew the data based if there's no tracking of IPs and stuff like that. Because you could go in here six times and do it, I think. So just a question. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. That's, that's a great question. And we do track IP address. And we do have, it's a pretty great surveying tool where we can actually see if like the same browser reinitiates and so on and so forth. So generally speaking, the data should be pretty reliable. Now, that being said, we do go through the responses and look at that information when we're doing our, our kind of review process of the survey. So although I'm saying 561, when we get in there, we would be able to pare that down and say, okay, well, maybe it actually looks like we have 500 because we've got some duplicates from the same IP address and so on and so forth. Because we did ask folks to submit one per household. Now we have to be careful because there are some situations where, you know, you may have folks that are using, you know, they may not be in the same family, but they live together and they may have the same IP address for different reasons. So we take that in consideration, but at the same time, we're also constant where, okay, if we have 10 from one IP address, that may be a flag. Whereas if we have two, we may say, okay, well, maybe we'll let those two voices come in. Just balancing that, that where there's no way to really know for certain who exactly filled it in without collecting personal information. And at the same time, to answer your other question, yes, it will be consolidated with other data points. So we will consider those, the great community engagement session or interview sessions that we've had. They've been extremely informative. We also combine that with conversations with staff and their experience. We combine it with data on bookings and what that looks like. So there's a lot of different points that come into creating this. So it's not to say that we'll take the survey and use that as gospel towards, you know, what, what, what creates the policy. So ideally through that combination and that augmentation of, of any kind of challenges that may have arisen in the data from the survey, we should still have a good, accurate representation of what community needs.
Thank you very much. Counselor Olson? Question? So, oh, Counselor Luck?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I thank you, Mary Ellen. I'm, I'm just curious in terms of, one of the things that I noticed in your data is that not, well, probably like 40 to 50% were over, I think, 35. And then when the question was asked about how the facility should be prioritized, like almost, what, like 70% said children, which doesn't surprise me. And one of the things that I guess it was a number of years ago that the, the schools changed their policy in terms of accessing school gyms. And I always think, growing up, that the school was kind of a hub for the community. And that seems like it's a bit of a barrier now because of just new policies where you have to pay and you have to have a custodian and, you know, so again, some of these community sports teams don't have access to some of the recreational facilities that we've had in the past, or at least as easily. And I'm just wondering if that's coming up at all in some of the qualitative interviews that you're, you're having with residents, if, if that's even been mentioned in terms of kind of a barrier or a limitation in terms of recreation with children. Just more so to curiosity. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Luck. It actually has come up. Not a lot, but we have heard from a couple of groups that those changes did shift how they source recreation spaces. It's also interesting to hear, you know, in the close proximity to Rossay, we've heard a lot about how RNS provides a lot of recreational space at the same time that may not be as restricted as schools that fall within the public school system. Now, of course, that's generally always referred to as the scraps, you know, because of course, they've got their own programming that they like to run there. But that being said, it is something we've heard, but not, not too loudly from a lot of groups, but from a few here and there. And so although, you know, ultimately, the policy will address the, the spaces that Quispansys or Town Quispansys operates, it's, we still do look at, you know, can groups access spaces in other places or have they lost spaces in other places that they were previously using that would constitute maybe some additional allocation going to those groups in order to allow that continuity? So we will, we will definitely look at that and we have definitely heard it. And, and it's one of those unique things where, you know, sometimes when we get into these policies, we want to almost even talk to adjacent towns to understand what spaces they have too. So that may come up in the next coming weeks as well, where we look at, okay, what groups are being, what facilities are groups from Quispansys using in Quispansys and what are they also using in Rossay, for example? So I guess that's a roundabout way of saying, yes, it has come up, but it hasn't been something that has been a large issue that we've been hearing about, if that kind of answers the question.
Thank you. Seeing there's no other questions, I'll just make a couple of comments. One is you said 88 persons out of the 561 identified with a disability of some sort. So that, that, that's, you know, we're talking 10 or 10 to 15% range of persons in our community that are identifying with a disability. That jumped out at me. The other is, is our demographic is more senior, higher senior, but the survey response for that demographic is much lower than the families and the individuals or, well, I guess they could fall in the individual one category as well. So I, I guess that just strengthens the idea of having availability of surveys wherever we can, very important. I point them out to people when I'm walking the track. I'll say, there's, there's a survey there, you should fill it out. But they take it with them, whether they bring it back. Um, I point them out to people when I'm walking the track. I'll say, there's, there's a survey there, you should fill it out. But they take it with them, whether they bring it back. Um, and whether they know where to, let's say on the sign where to drop it off, but I thought that was very interesting. So, um, uh, I guess just to wrap it up, no, there's no other questions. Thank you very much, Mary Ellen, for the update. And we look forward to um, seeing your progress and we will, as counselors, share, have your say and promote it. And try to get more surveys going, but kudos to you and kudos to the department for everything you've done to get this policy on its way. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. You as well. Thank you so much.
Counselor Donovan?
Uh, I'd move the council, thank Mary Ellen, uh, from Forward Creative for the presentation. And we look forward to the next steps in the implementation process.
Moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Locke on the question. Motion carried six zero. Okay, Mary Ellen's gone. Um, let's move on and. There's no public hearings tonight, um, minutes of the previous meeting. Move by Counselor Donovan. Seconded by Counselor Locke. On the question. Please vote now. Kicked out. Oh, I have to log back in. We good? Motion carried six zero. So the next uh, one that we're on is correspondence. I'm, I'm just waiting for mine to come up back up. But um, uh, Terry Lockery is not in attendance. So I'm going to um, ask that our um, Director of Community Service, Dana Perton Dixon. Please speak on this for staff, on, on behalf of staff for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, as the staff report outlines, there is a request from Ms. Lockery. To host markets in the Arts and Culture Park with food trucks, which requires a bylaw. Excuse me, in the parks, uh, bylaw, it's required to have permission from the town, which is uh, town, town council. So as the staff report outlines, she has requested June seventh, thirteenth and July thirteenth and July twentieth. Which staff have reserved for her, uh, based on counsel's recommendation this evening. So if this is an activity you'd like to see in our park, we would ask you that you refer that to staff. And we will work with the proponent to ensure that um, we discuss obviously insurance and liability. As well as location of vendors, electricity needs, such as, uh, such as that, as well as um, working with public health. To, to have the proper certifications for that.
Thank you very much for the update and um. Next in queue, I believe, is Counselor Miller, please.
I was going to move the council approve the request from Terra Lockery to operate a market with food trucks in the Art and Culture Park this summer. And refer to staff to ensure the vendors have adequate insurance coverage, vendor location information, a proper waste removal process. And necessary public health authorizations and adherence to all applicable terms and conditions.
Moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. On the question. We're good? Please vote. Motion carried six zero. Thank you very much. We're moving on to section eleven bylaws, bylaw A. A proposed bylaw number zero six eight, a bylaw of the municipality of QuizPansas rep, rep, respecting council code of conduct. Counselor Olson, please.
I'd move first reading be given to bylaw number zero six eight, a bylaw of the municipality of QuizPansas respecting council code of conduct.
Uh, seconder, Counselor Thompson? So on the question. Counselor Locke, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to give kudos to our clerk and CAO. I know it was not an easy process going back and forth, um, but I do think that um, you've done a great job capturing all the different concerns. And, and putting it into a, I think, a very well-rounded policy that hopefully will serve us in the future. And I more so just wanted to ask more of a, a process question around um, some of the new wording. So, and I just more so asking what it looks like. So, um, one of the additional um, additions in. Section, what'd it be? E. Three or I, I, I one on page nine, just the internal investigation panel. So uh, if there is unanimous consent from all parties involved, um, council can authorize further review and investigation. I think that's a nice compromise to some of the concerns that we had. So thank you very much for including that. And I guess in terms of um, unanimous, so it would be everyone in council. And it doesn't speak to the person that um, has the complaint against them. I just wanted clarity. Like, is that then basically all of council? So it would be that person as well. So, but again, great job. Thank you.
Let the clerk speak to that, please. One, there you go.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so the internal investigation panel would include. The mayor, the deputy mayor, uh, one counselor and the individual who um, the complaint is for. So those would be the parties involved and we could add that. Is that your question?
Sorry, Counselor Locke, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I guess I interpreted that it would be decided on, among council. Like, so for example, if a complaint came in and it basically felt like there was an investigation warranted. Then everyone, including, like, everyone on council would decide, would, should this go to an internal investigation? Or should it go to an external investigation? When I thought of, when I read it as um, a consent from all parties involved, because wouldn't council be considered one of the parties involved? I guess that's where I was looking for clarity. I like the idea that all council would kind of have a say. Because again, it's really, the challenge I think we had with this policy is, you know, there's always one offs. And it's hard to make a policy because there's just so many things, but it's nice that it's kind of based on what you're dealing with and the context of that. That council would look at it and go, you know what, we really need to do external, or you know what, this is something small, it's not a big deal. We just need that extra few little things that we need to kind of explore before we make a decision. And then unanimously council, like all parties involved would say, yes, we're going to do an investigation, an internal investigation and everyone's okay with it. So I guess that was just, that was my, how I interpreted it, that all the parties involved would be all of council. Which would be the person that potentially has a complaint lodged against them, because it is a council code of conduct policy. But if maybe that's not the intent.
Going to um, ask that perhaps the clerk, would you like to clarify that? Or would you like me to go to Mr. Watson? See if we can, because when I saw unanimous, I thought it was council and not the person that was. The complaint is against, it would just be council making the decision for about that one council member. So I guess we need a little bit more work on this. Thank you. Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, through you to members of council, um, a couple of thoughts here. And I'm, I'll, I'll glance frequently at the clerk just to make sure I'm not straying. Uh, but um, our, our intent was to respect the notion that not only. Members of council who are involved in any layer of investigation, but also the subject member. Is a, a party to the unanimous consent. So for sure, the member who is a subject of the investigation would be one of the consenting members. So I think that only leaves the question as to whether or not it's all of council or, or a small subset of council that is making that determination. Uh, with the subject member. Um, I don't feel strongly either way. I think it could be either council or a small committee of council. If council wishes to give us direction, we can make that change. Uh, and then it would just reflect that uh, an internal investigation panel. If there is unanimous consent from all of council, including the subject member, council can authorize further review. If council's comfortable with that, we can make that amendment easily, I'm sure.
Okay, so just on that, I, I have one more comment. So if it's unanimous consent. Um, versus majority consent of council. It, it has to be unanimous. Okay, thank you. Counselor Locke, are you good? So, we were asking for first and second, so are, are we good here? Or do we need to change the wording a little bit to Mr. Watson? First and second, Mr. Watson, I'll do some, uh, a little bit, or Lisa will do a little bit and bring it back, okay? So on the question, on the first reading, we'll take the vote. We had a, a, we had a motion, right? We have a mover and seconder on all, on the first reading. All those in favor? Uh, motion carried six zero. Could I have a mover and seconder for second reading? Moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Locke. On the question. And there is none, please vote. Motion carried six zero. Thank you very much. Thank you to Ms. Watson, or Mr. Watson and Ms. For all your hard work on this so far. Okay, so where are we? We're on number twelve. New business. So uh, the first one we have is council final acceptance, Kingsview subdivision phase eighteen. Schooner Point Development Limited staff report from engineering technologists. Um, do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson.
Should, should, I should read that. Uh, whereas the, the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements. In accordance with subdivision bylaws number zero three five and the developers agreement. Uh, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Kingsview subdivision phase eighteen. In addition, we recommend that council approve release of the two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollar bonding to Schooner Point Development Limited.
And that was seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? One's not coming up. There we go. Motion carried six zero. And we're on to twelve B, council final acceptance Fowler Brothers Limited subdivision. Staff, there is a staff report from the engineering technologist. Do I, I, Counselor Olson, please?
Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaws zero three five and the developers agreement. It would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Fowler Brothers Limited subdivision. In addition, we recommend that council approve release of the fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollar bonding to Fowler Brothers Limited.
Seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. Seeing there is none, please vote. Motion carried six zero. That takes us to twelve C, street upgrading. Two thousand and twenty-five tenders, two zero two five T Q zero four dash seven, recommendation of award. First of all, Mr. Watson, would you like to speak on this, please? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you, members of council, uh, just draw your attention to the staff report that identifies that there were three proponents. Uh, to this tendering for twenty twenty-five street capital. Uh, and uh, that uh, the bid, those submission bids did meet the requirements of the tender documents. Uh, and with the pricing that was, uh, was received, um, the recommendation is to proceed with the low bid. Of, uh, as noted in your staff report. So certainly welcome for the discussion, but uh, that's the recommendation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Watson. Do I have a motion, uh, motion to move? Uh, Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I would move the council award tender number two zero two five T Q zero four dash seven. Street upgrading twenty twenty-five to a low bidder from Deble Enterprises Limited, uh, for the bid price of. Two million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and five cents plus H S D.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Okay, Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, worship. I just was looking at the asphalt pricing. At a hundred and thirty-two a ton. Um, we're above the twenty twenty-four. At a doll, a dollar eighteen fifty, but below our projected pricing of a hundred and sixty-five a ton. Was that, were, were we budgeting at a hundred and sixty-five a ton? And we came in at a hundred and thirty-two a ton. So I would assume we can go a little further. With paving.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, worship.
Do I have a question or Mr. Colburn? Okay. Here, okay, Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for, and through you to Counselor Thompson. Uh, you're correct in that the budget amount was at one sixty-five a ton and the quotes returned at one thirty-two a ton. So we are below budget. Uh, that said, um, we would advise against adding additional paving obligations. On the town at this point of the budget cycle and of our operational cycle. Um, our recommendation would be to get at least partway through the, the paving season, uh, see where we are. Uh, given that we've already incurred some unexpected capital expenses with respect to roads and streets, as you know. Uh, and uh, we want to make sure that we land the year uh, within budget overall. So our recommendation should be hang tight, have us uh, get to work on the, on the matters that were approved in our five-year capital plan for, for this year. Uh, and that we can check back in approximately halfway through the paving season and uh, and see where we are.
And thank you very much, and I'll take comments for Mr. Dwight Colburn, please.
Thank you, worship. Um, basically spilling off what the CAO had said in terms of having a contingency and see where we sit. And we also have to be uh, mindful of the current economic conditions and how that fluctuates and what that could happen. Impact that might have as we move through the construction season. So uh, sort of sitting back and waiting, sort of holding that contingency. And then reevaluating partially through as the CAO has indicated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sounds like a, a plan. Um, so, so I'm going to go next in queue, uh, Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, yeah, so it's, it's, it's nice to see that asphalt prices have stayed down. So there's about a three hundred and seventy-five thousand savings so far, but as you said, let's, let's hope. But as you said, let's, let's hope, stay put. Um, and to me, even if it comes too late to get, if we do have some money at the end, there's also some sidewalks that could be maybe looked at that aren't as, you don't need to put a bid out like we, in, in the time for the vehicles or vehicles for the paving. My question is on, um, the, the big ones that are missing here. So Millennium and Cedar Ridge, because they, this isn't included in that. Um, so my, my question is, when will those, uh, R F Ps come in for Millennium and Cedar Ridge? Because those are excluded from this, because if I look at our total budget, it was three point something million and this is the two, two million of it. We're missing the, the paving. And when I looked also at the Millennium budget, it didn't actually show any seal coat, which is kind of strange. I know we planned it the year before, but it wasn't in the budget for twenty twenty-five. So if you could maybe enlighten what, what, when we see the Millennium R F P or what's going on with that one? Thanks, because we delayed that last year because of other issues.
Mr. Colburn, please. Or, okay, Mr. Watson? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor and to Counselor Miller. Um, in the absence of, uh, our engineering manager and, uh, and the director of engineering this evening, I'd be a little remiss to give you a hard date there. Uh, but if you could take that back and bring it back to your next meeting, I'd, I'd appreciate that latitude.
Counselor Luck, please, you're next in queue.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I actually had the exact same question as Counselor Miller, but I also was curious about Gondola Point, more so just because, uh, Millennium, Cedar Ridge and Gondola Point, I hear quite a bit about because, um, the conditions are quite terrible. So, um, anyway, if, um, C A O could actually add an update for that as well, um, it would be nice to hear kind of the, the plans for Gondola Point because it is getting pretty, um, dangerous when, uh, when you're looking at some of the pavement conditions. Thank you.
So noted?
So noted.
Okay, thank you very much. And Counselor Olson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Recognizing all of the hesitancy of being advised on adding new roads to the agenda, when, if and when that becomes acceptable, again, I'd like one to be out front for consideration. And that's Riverfront Crescent that I annually get calls on to put the seal coat on. That was never completed and the residents there complain about the, uh, about the tar uh, in, in hot weather. I know it doesn't get hot now, but, uh, when it, when it gets really hot, it comes right up through and it makes a mess of, uh, of people walking on the road and in the vehicles themselves for the Riverfront Crescent, just off the Gondola Point, uh, access to the ferry there.
Thank you, um, Counselor Olson. And I do have, um, looked at that and there was never anything put on that road. It's never been sealed. So do I have any more questions or comments? We're, so we did have your, um, Mr. Watson, you have a question you have to get back to us on. So are we still good with the motion? We're still good to go with the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a mover and a seconder?
Yep.
Okay.
Moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson.
Okay, moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question.
I've got another question.
Oh, on the question, sorry, Counselor Olson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was, I was looking at Morrison Lane and I was wondering, I thought that that was a private, uh, lane and I was just wondering what the, uh, history was there? If anyone has, could clarify that for me? And what, what it's going to cost and what's being advised and, on what's to be prepared for Morrison Lane.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. I'm going to direct that question to Mr. Watson. I know Morrison Lane is just off the Gondola Point Road. Um, and it is, I believe, a, a private lane. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, and through you, Counselor Olson and others, you're correct. Uh, Morrison Lane is a private lane. Um, there have been some concerns from, uh, the residents of Morrison Lane uh, that extend beyond a year where erosion challenges are, are making it challenging both for navigation of the lane as well as for snow clearing by the residents of that lane um, and, and, and by, by our staff or our subcontracted staff. So, uh, recognizing that, um, uh, that problem, uh, as well as kind of secondary effects of the erosion on, on our town infrastructure, um, the intent was last year to have used extra millings from, uh, the Street Capital Program from last year uh, to provide a, a lower standard of coverage to Morrison Lane than what would a, a full street reconstruction would offer. Um, but, uh, that was not available at the end of last year. Uh, so as a consequence, uh, the engineering head team had been asked for in this year's Street Capital Program, uh, we, uh, allocate some design budget manpower and equipment time, uh, by this successful contractor just to, to, uh, do that, what I would call, uh, a lower grade resurfacing project on Morrison Lane. Uh, it would not meet town standards for a new street, uh, but it would, uh, reduce the erosion of the area as well as improve navigation and snow clearing ability.
Counselor Olson?
Thank you.
Good? So if that's the end of the discussion, okay, we'll move for the vote. All those in favor? Motion carried six zero. So there are several reports in the package. There's one report that I'm very excited about. The Environmental Trust Fund, Ritchie Lake Sediment and Water Quality Study. We actually got forty thousand dollars, so that's after, as we all know, many years of applying. So this was our year, so, um, very thankful for that. And I'm sure the advisory committee that's been struck will be, um, very happy as well. And, and anybody else wanted to report? Seeing there is none. Uh, can I have a motion to receive and file? We don't need that? We don't do that anymore? Okay. I'm going back in time. Okay, um, business arising from committee of the whole. Uh, could I have a, a motion for the proposed town, um, Town of Quispamsis budget schedule and a proposed annual facility rental adjustment? Counselor Thompson?
Um, thank you, Your Worship. I move that council approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six budget schedule and the proposed method of, uh, method to adjust twenty twenty-six facility rental rates as presented.
So I'm, uh, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Counselor Luck. Yeah, good. Motion carried six zero. I have a motion to adjourn. This moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, all in favor, please vote now. Move six zero. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.